And are we recording? Excellent. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to B County Commissioners' Court. The time is nine oh two AM, and I'm calling this regular term meeting to order. Today is Monday, May twelfth, twenty twenty five. We're physically located at the B County Courthouse Commissioners' courtroom, number one ten, one oh five West Corpus Christi Street, Beville, Texas, seven eight one oh two. That was agenda item number one. Call to order, agenda item number two, prayer. Would everybody please start?
Father God, we will thank you for life. Thank you for putting it on this earth. Guide us, direct us, give us the wisdom to do the things that are right for the county, for the people. Bless our first responders. We ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner. Please join me in pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. We're on agenda item number four. This is recognition of visitors. It's not public comment, and it's not an opportunity to say anything about why you may be here, but if you are so interested in getting your name into our official record, this is your opportunity to do so. Regardless if anybody takes me up on my offer to all our visitors here today. Thank y'all for being here. Please keep coming anytime that you so wish. Is there anybody who'd like to identify themselves for the record at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item number five, Commissioners' Court, opening remarks. Commissioner Lenny, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Judge. Good morning, everyone. First off, I want to say hope every mom out there had a wonderful Mother's Day. I had participated in the open house of Saint Mary's Charter School a few weeks ago, and that was very well attended, lots of kiddos, and I know they did well with their enrollment, so congratulations to Saint Mary's. If you remember, we had David Cave here next to Longo talking about the eight one one, and lo and behold, that week, there was a, just an example of how important it is to call eight one one. There was a man on South Minnesota that was gonna put a mailbox at the end of his sidewalk, and with a pair of post hole diggers, and he found a city water line with it, and it shot a gusher up by thirty, forty foot, and you can imagine, it scared people when he did that. But point to that is example of why you call eight one one. So the city guy had all taken care of, and everything was okay. I attended our monthly Chamber of Commerce board meeting.
Breakfast for everybody at midnight tonight.
We had put on a movie night at Saint Mary's Charter School, and had about sixty, seventy people show up to that. That was a good deal. Also, I want to thank Road and Bridge. They took care of some issues. Lonesome Oak, County Road three fourteen, Sisneros Lane, and Amador Ramirez. I reached out to those guys, and not all the same time for the same roads, but one time on two and one other time on the other two roads. And within a matter of two days, those guys had it taken care of. So thanks to Road and Bridge for doing that. Appreciate that. I had him meet the, how well it works for us and all that good stuff, because he is trying really hard to get Sam Pat to switch over. So we had a good discussion on that. And then a note on the expo air conditioning system. The air conditioner closest to the stage, they were finishing up on Friday, and they realized there was a thermal expansion valve that had not been working or had been damaged months ago, so Schmackler's ordering a new one this morning. And when it comes in, that's the last thing to do for that particular unit. It'll be finished, and then we'll call Kenny over at Beck Brothers. They can start on the other side with that wall, and they'll get the other air conditioner taken care of. This coming Saturday, I'll be participating in the, have their citywide spring cleanup. Anyone wanting to help with that, you can get ahold of the city for that. And what we do, what I do is I get addresses of people that don't have the means or are able to take debris and stuff like that to the collection station. So that'll be going on this Saturday. And then also, this Saturday, I'll be attending the Boys and Girls Club Casino Night fundraiser. That's always a good, good event to attend. They do a really great job of putting that on and have a really good turnout every year. And then also, I was invited to attend the Skidmore Tine Athletic Banquet next Tuesday, which I'll be going to. And then last but not least, there are several projects in the community that I'll be working on here in the very near future. With that, I will pass to my left.
Thank you, sir. Judge, I have several things, so if everybody will just get comfortable.
You take all the time you need, Commissioner. We missed you last, was it last?
Time before.
Need time before.
We have some really interesting stuff I'm gonna bring up here in a minute, but before I do that, let's start at the bus stop in Mineral. As you noticed, it has not been put back in place yet. The contractor and the insurance company are close to being at an impasse on exactly what it should cost and what they should pay the contractors. If, I'm gonna meet with the contractor this week. Depending upon that meeting, I may be coming back to the Commissioners' Court for B County to take full control of the process and move the contractor out and look for another contractor. So it's in the works. The main thing, it's safe. It hasn't been taken down, so we'll go from there. Met with the sand frac company out on West King Lane. The sheriff's office was there, DPS was there. There was a question about cutting some miles off of their route to save the oil companies money. We met with them for quite a while. It was a very good conversation. Those are fine people out there. They're doing a great job. It was determined that the amount of time and miles they were gonna save, probably gonna be less than a half a mile, and they wanted to utilize our county roads to do it. And the way that they were left, and I'll be, I'll be quite frank, I told them that if they wanted to pursue it, they needed to get their information together and bring it to Commissioners' Court, and the Commissioners' Court would decide if we would let them go down County Road one oh six and cut across Shorty, so to speak. To do that, it would completely tear that road up. These, these sandboxes, as they call them on the trucks, weigh between thirty-six thousand and thirty-eight thousand pounds each. Our county roads are rated at eighty thousand pounds. Now, that's under the rating, even if you include the truck and the trailer. But still, they mentioned to us that they were running, when they were running, about a hundred trucks a day. And you can imagine the traffic on the county roads and what it would do to the county road people that live out there, so it's in their hands right now. If they want to pursue us, they'll bring it to us in court. As all of you know, here, the last day of April, we had a huge thunderstorm, lightning, hail in North B County. It was so bad, it broke windows out in Pawnee. It broke windshield. It damaged some of the vehicles so bad, they're totaled. It traveled down, if you would, my ranch is between Pettus and the children's home. Lightning hit a tree. I lost two big cows and a bull, and it was instant. The lightning hit this big oak tree, and they were standing under it to get out of the hail, I'm sure, and they just fell right there. They were instantly dead. So we all grew up with our parents, and everybody said, "Don't get under the trees when it's lightning and thundering." It's true. Don't do it. Talked to other people that have had similar situations. We had one gentleman, lightning hit a hay ring and killed five. Not recently, but at one time. So it does happen. That's the first time I've been dealing with cattle out there since I was about two years old. First time we've ever lost any to lightning. But it does happen, and it's a tragedy. The good news is, it was instant. And, but it does happen. Okay. Now, we talked about the heavy hail. Between Mineral and Pawnee was where the hail was heaviest. What else is between Mineral and Pawnee? The wind and solar farm. Think about this. Solar farm and hail, not good. I got a call from Orange State. They said that they did have damage to the solar farm. Now, remember, that solar farm has a million solar panels. Those panels are about the size of that table where the ladies are sitting. It's on a slight angle, but if hail hits it, it's glass, and it breaks. They don't know how many hit. They're gonna call me back this week and let me know. They didn't want to speculate whether it was severe or minor, but they said, "We did have damage." They're being good neighbors. They're letting us know. One reason they let us know, some solar panels have cadmium in them. Well, cadmium is not good when it leaches into the soil. None of these panels have any of those type of chemicals in them, so even if they're broken, there's no soil contamination, according to them. So that's some good news. Now, some more good news, and this is where I'm gonna read off some information. We talked about the solar panels just then, the wind and solar. Item eighteen in our agenda, there is a comprehensive audit attached to that item that talks about everything that's going on in B County as far as the budgets, the auditing, one thing and another. And some pages I pulled out of it, I thought might be interesting to everybody, and I'm gonna read off of these, so bear with me. The principal property taxpayers in B County, the top ten taxpayers in B County, and you may be wondering, well, it's gonna be the oil and gas companies. Well, that's what I thought. It's not. Helen and the Wind LLC, that's the wind farm out of Mineral. The valuation, they're ranked number one. The valuation is over two hundred and fifty-two million dollars, just for the wind farm. Number two is Sparta Solar LLC. That's the solar farm where the million panels are. Two hundred and forty-seven million dollars valuation. Because of these valuations, that's why, and I'll get to that later, that's why our tax rate has gone down. A lot of us don't like the looks of the wind and all that kind of stuff, but it's lower in our taxes, because they're paying a lot of taxes. Number three is Blackjack Creek Wind Farm LLC, a hundred and ninety-seven million. That's down in Commissioner Oliveris's precinct around Popolonia. Burlington Resources Oil and Gas, a hundred and one million. That's number four. Carrero G and P LLC, eighty-eight thousand. I don't have a clue who that is. I don't know that name. I've never heard it. I don't know where they're located. AEP Texas, we all know who AEP is. They're number six. Eighty-seven million. I did not realize that a public utility was taxed. It could be because of the substations they have at the wind farm and solar farms. I don't know. Number seven is TPL South Texas Processing Company. Don't have a clue who they are.
Pipeline.
Pipeline. They are eighty million. Caronco Wind Project, that's also in Commissioner Oliveris's. That is seventy-two million, and that's the one we gave an abatement on several years ago. They're number eight. Number nine is Marathon Oil Company, fifty-one million. Number ten is KPL South Texas LLC, thirty-three million. Another pipeline, okay? Those are the ten largest taxpayers, and I'll be dropping this off at the newspaper. They may want to run some. Okay, we talked about how that affected our tax rate. This is something that we need to look at, because we all draft about taxes. I pay taxes. We all pay taxes. Ah, we're paying too much. Because of these entities that we just talked about, I'm gonna read off the tax rates since two thousand and eighteen to last year. Two thousand and eighteen, we were, and this is per one hundred, correct me if I'm wrong, one hundred valuation, point six eight seven cents. Sixty-nine cents a hundred. Two thousand and nineteen, sixty-seven cents a hundred. Two thousand and twenty, sixty-eight cents a hundred. Two thousand and twenty-one, seventy cents a hundred. Two thousand and twenty-two, seventy-three cents a hundred. I'm rounding up. Two thousand and twenty-three, fifty-nine cents a hundred. That's when these, these entities start kicking in. This last year, it was forty-nine cents a hundred. So our tax rate has gone down, although our appraisal rate on maybe our house or our land has gone up, but the tax rate has gone down. So that's a good thing. So when we see those blinking lights, lights at night, we can stomp our feet and cuss all we want to, but always look for the good side of everything to help me pay the taxes in B County and lower our taxes. The other thing I'd like to share with everybody is principal employers in B County. Current and nine years ago, unorganized. Okay. This surprised me also. Who do you think the principal employers are in B County? I'll read them off. Number one is Beville ISD, four hundred and ninety-four employees. They're ranked number one. Number two, TDCJ McConnell, four hundred and thirty-one employees. Number three, TDCJ Garza, four hundred and eighteen. Close to Ben College, four oh nine. Now, I'm gonna read off some, some towns that aren't in B County, but they are in the taxing district of B County. Mathis ISD, number five, two hundred and fifty-one. B County, that's us. We're number five? No, we're number six, a hundred and ninety-eight. Pawnee ISD, a hundred and sixty. Skidmore Tine, a hundred and forty-two. This is full-time employees. Raffirio ISD, a hundred and twenty-six. They're number nine. And coming in last is Three Rivers ISD, a hundred and fourteen, at number ten. Those are the principal employers in B County. All school districts are county. So I thought that would be interesting for everybody to know.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I appreciate it, sir.
Commissioner?
Uh, this past few weeks, it's been busy. We're, we had tabled an item on the courthouse restoration, because the contract was, was a little fuzzy. And since then, talked to Eric McGee from Allison Bass and McGee. They're reviewing it. They're still going over some things. He suggested a few items. We're gonna, we have an item on here. We're gonna table it again.
We're gonna discuss.
We're gonna discuss it. We'll potentially table it again. We have a meeting with Kamatsu, the contractor, at three thirty, so I don't want to get ahead of it.
You're sorry to give a little bit, but that's okay.
Yeah. So we will have a meeting this afternoon after four, so we have that going on. Next, we have, I had a couple of constituents called on Car Road. They were going out on Car Road, hitting Charco Road, and when they get to the stop sign, they couldn't see to the right. And they called and said, "Hey, we need those limbs cut. We need those limbs cut." And I called Road and Bridge and go, "Hey, that's Tex dot," so I called Mitch at Tex dot. I said, "Hey, you can't see. When you get up to the stop sign, you gotta keep creeping forward to look to the right." They took care of it right away, so great job for Tex dot to go out there and take care of that item, and appreciate that. They also cut along Dickerson Road and Car Road. Had a lot of good compliments on that. It's all cleaned up. That road looks like it's twice as big now, with all the bursts that was cut. So they did a really, really good job there. And then at BDA, we've, I have a meeting this evening, but two weeks ago, we signed a, or potential signing of a contract to redo the, restart the touch and goes again. So we'll be seeing a lot of activity out there at the airport. So the Navy's gonna start doing their touch and goes, and they're gonna sign, or potentially sign a contract to fix any damages they do as they land and take off.
Just the main runway or the cross runway?
No, the main runway right now. And also on the fuel, I think they're gonna, they're gonna sign something to buy the fuel from this year. So that's going on out there. I do have a meeting with BDA this afternoon. So I've got a couple of big meetings coming up, this afternoon, three thirty, BDA this afternoon, and with that, I'm gonna pass to Commissioner DeWitt.
Good morning, and echo on what Commissioner Lenny said. Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers that are out there. Very appreciated. Mothers do a great job with us kids, so thank you very much for what you do. I'd like to start out with a little bit of recognition. I had some great computer help from our John Parkman here with our computer group here. Good, good support. Good support. They're doing a great job. Also, I'd like to, again, recognize our volunteer fire departments and our first responders. This morning was an excellent reason why we need these guys. It's all volunteered. We had an individual here that was suffering from a stroke, potential stroke. We're not sure yet. Anyhow, we were able to get a night light brought out early this morning and get him to some safety, so really good idea. Really appreciate the volunteers, the fire departments, the EMS, and also the SOs for open our community whenever in need of emergency, so great job. Just some general information, as Commissioner Faidus was mentioning, I also met with Mr. Eric McGee, and we'll talk more about that during our grant discussion. I attended a Coast of Van Peace Office Association meeting. Great meeting. A lot of, a lot of individuals showed up there. Very, very good meeting. Also, in order to help understand what do we need to do in the event of a hurricane, I attended the twenty twenty-five Hurricane Conference in Rocktown. Good turnout. Got to interface with a lot of people. Our emergency manager was there, line guards. In fact, he actually participated on the discussion panel. So I'll provide a good feedback to the, to all the other counties that were in attendance. Attended a kickoff meeting with our GLO for the Mid-Mine Project, and this is for the Silver Creek Bridge and also water development in Pettus and Tine as well. We had our first salary committee meeting last week. Went well, so it's the first of many more to come. On the ELC, thanks to our emergency managers that was there, we started to smell, a musty smell in our main conference room. And when I got there, it was pretty much cleared out. However, after making a detailed evaluation, we determined what it was. It was a bad expansion valve, which was causing residue, residue, an additional water that was accumulating in a pan, creating a musty smell. So all that's been cleaned up. We have new parts that are coming in this week, so hopefully all that'll be fixed up. And then also, you know, you never can have enough eyes looking at a new building, and I mean, I'll probably walk past this at least a hundred times. I know everyone else in the building. Thanks to our code enforcer, Mr. Bobby Jameson, noticed our gutters were sagging in the front entrance. And I never noticed it, and after he mentioned to me, went and looked, and it's starting to sag. So anyhow, warranty work, so they're gonna come on and get that fixed up. So it's little things like that, and it's a good thing that, you know, we're catching these things now rather than a year later, so it's a, a lot easier to get these things fixed. Also, that's a shame. I've been bucked the cattle and electricity and storms. Now, after the heavy rain, we also experienced in South B County, made a trip around the county that morning. Unfortunately, County Road five nineteen is, is low. It's just a low area throughout the whole community, and it is holding back water with one of our county roads. So I made a recommendation here to our Road and Bridge group, Road and Bridge group, to see about adding some additional culverts there in that area and hopefully move some of that water out. But it is low. No matter what's done, I think over time, on a big heavy rain, it is gonna accumulate water, but hopefully this will mitigate a little bit of the water and move it out. Road and Bridge is still working on scraping the ditch lines on County Road six ten and clean out some of the culverts, which is another low-lying area. So hopefully all these little things that we're doing will help B County move some of that water out. And with that, Judge, I'll pass it back to you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd just like to say very briefly, last week I had the opportunity, and I appreciate Commissioner Lenny reaching out to me, to speak to the B County Republican Party. It was a lot of fun. I think it was last week. It was last week? Because everybody was there. No business was discussed, but it was a great opportunity to field some meaningful and interesting questions from the attendees. Like to thank you publicly for giving me that opportunity. I did enjoy it, and they were very nice. They didn't handle me with kid gloves. They shot straight, but, but they didn't beat me up too much either. So as you all know, I'm incredibly sensitive, very thin-skinned, so they treated me nicely. I just want to say I appreciate that. All right, moving on. That's agenda item number five. The agenda item number six, oh, one other thing on, on agenda item number five. Commissioner DeWitt, and I appreciate you bringing that up. I thought that was really good information on our top ten taxpayers. But our top two taxpayers, remember, this is very important, right? Because Caronco was taxpayer number six or seven. Top two taxpayers are green energy, for which the county did not grant an abatement. They still came to the county, because they made their own independent personal business decision that they could make a profit in this. their own independent personal business decision that they could make a profit in this particular location with their particular business, uh, development. And they can, and they did, and they did it without, uh, without, um, hoisting or foisting, uh, their tax burden upon, uh, the remainder of Be County citizens. So, once again, great job, commissioners, and, uh, for everybody in, in the public and, and anybody else that's so interested when new opportunities like that come up. I think it's important that we keep in mind that these entities will still come to Be County if they so wish, desire, and can find land to do so. And they do not need us to artificially hold them up, to artificially make their business profitable. Um, so, it's a win-win for everybody, and I'd just like to thank the commissioners once again for their continuing courage and strength in avoiding granting tax abatements where tax abatements do not add value to a great employment increase, um, uh, to the county.
If I could add to that, Judge, I think we have a new solar farm coming in, and Commissioner Oliver says it, and it's, how many acres is it? It's huge.
It's big.
I'm not sure it'll be as big as one in, in Mineral, but it's gonna add to the tax base also, and that's, well, I understand. They're starting construction soon.
They already have, yes.
And it's out of time.
They're putting in battery, uh, banks as well.
Okay. Great. And, and they, they knew how the court felt. They did not even approach the court for that. So, we, we've gotten word out there, Judge.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just did wanna comment on that. I think it's important.
Absolutely.
Okay, now, moving on. That's it for agenda item number five, unless any other commissioners have anything else. I know we've got a rapt audience. They wanna hear us talk longer. No? Okay, moving on. Agenda item number six, public comment. Now, this is the opportunity that any member of the public, uh, wishes to address Commissioners Court. This is your opportunity. I don't believe we have anybody who's signed up this morning. Is there anybody who wishes to address Commissioners Court in public comment this morning? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item number seven. The following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioners Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a Commissioner or county judge.
Need to approve?
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I have a second with comment.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Oliver votes. You have the floor.
So, just a, a quick clarity. Commissioner Lenny, you had one where, uh, some of these individuals are gonna be working toward the JP, and it just, the word work kinda caught my eye. Is that, are they gonna actually be working, or it was just a phrase they used for the JP's?
I'm sorry, I've not, during, during this, or is that off?
Well, I was just making it, yeah.
If it's an agenda item?
It's an agenda item coming up.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Okay.
I'll catch that then.
Okay.
I have some.
Is it, it's being approved, though, in the consent agenda?
Um, I do have a, um, on one of the change of statuses under Brandon Viegas, it has two checks on there, but that is new employment. So, that resignation check needs to just be discarded.
Okay.
I took that to, I made this one up.
That, I wanted to bring that up.
Yes.
Anything that we need to pull before we consider the particular agenda item later on in the agenda?
No, I just wanted to make that correction.
I just, I just have one more.
Not a problem at all. I appreciate you bringing it up. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thanks, gentlemen. Thank you, Mrs. King Two. Moving on, discuss and consider action on the following items. Agenda item number eight, presentation by the District and Multi-County Court, uh, Judge regarding establishing a Be County Pre-Trial Service Office. We have our three-hundred-and-thirty-four, three-hundred-and-forty-third District Judge, Jana Watley, present this morning. Uh, we have an amazing PowerPoint presentation that we hope we can get to work, and we're gonna do that right now.
How do we, how do we get it started?
I don't know, Judge, but.
Should just slide it open, slide the lens open.
That would be great.
If not, just hit the power button.
And just so you know, I, every time we have trouble with IT in the courtroom, I remind everybody that there's not one lawyer that I know that went to school for IT. And, I mean, I, I'm, I'm telling you, it's, it's unfortunately not something we all can deal with.
The light's on? It's very bright? Oh, I see it. Oh, wait, you know what? I bet I can.
It's still warming up.
Oh, it's warming up. It's coming. Well, let me, let me, if it's all right, are you ready that I can visit?
Oh, yes, Judge, please.
And who's in charge of moving this next slide?
I was, I was just gonna say Veronica. I think you're the boss now.
Okay, good. And I will, I will talk to you as well.
Next slide. I think I gotta get this. You got it?
Just there, okay. We'll take it to the next slide.
Hazardous thing. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Judge and Commissioners, for allowing us to bring this to you. Uh, this is a, has been on our wish list for a while for the district judges. And with Judge Hardwick's arrival, we've been able to really, uh, see where this would, uh, be extremely valuable to Be County. And, um, we have used it in San Pat since twenty-nineteen. And, uh, we've sort of done it, so I've got today also with you, of course, you have Judge Hardwick. We also had Jason Woods, who's our chief juvenile, I keep calling her juvenile. I so apologize. She's adult probation officer. And then we also have Ms. Kelly Atkins, who runs the San Patricia County Pre-Trial Service Office. Any questions we've got? And we anticipate if Beeville does add this, uh, that this position will start in October with the new base year, and that it will be run by the Community Supervision Department. That's how we do it in San Patricia County, because they have the resources that best make this office work. So, I guess we're ready to start with slide one, or slide two, I should say. All right, this is tell, sets you out, so you have it available to you, the Code of Criminal Procedure, uh, that allows with any county or any judicial district with jurisdiction in more than one county, of course, that's us, with approval, the Commissioners Court may set up this office. And so, this is the authority that gives you the ability to do that. So, just threw that in there for you without having to read all the whole law. So, we'll go to the next page. Uh, in two thousand and one is when Texas decided to enact the Texas Fair Defense Act, and that was the first year on my, on the bench. And let me tell you, it was a very pivotal year. Uh, again, I, as I was visiting with Commissioner Oliver earlier, we started, uh, that's the first unfunded mandate we started getting from the, from the legislators regarding our criminal cases. And this is strictly criminal matter. Uh, and so, we have to ensure that all court-appointed lawyers are assigned indigent defendants. Uh, the act also requires the, um, Texas Indigent Commission, uh, to oversee any defense services in Texas. So, periodically, uh, I know they will, um, audit April. Have you had, have we, in this county, had an audit on the TIDC yet?
Um, no. I mean, they send us theirs.
Yeah, they send us, but it's not totally. I, I anticipate this is something the state's gonna move forward with a couple of years, just because of the way they're going and auditing all the, all the courts. We have some legislators that are, feel like that the courts are not acting like we need to be. Uh, the pre-trial service with office would evaluate appointment of counsel that follows the procedures and the timelines. And this has been a very, um, concerning factor in this particular county, is making sure that we are always keeping up with the timelines. Uh, they can also gather information about an accused, on whether they'll be able to comply with any release fines, and report those findings to the court. Uh, specifically, we have, your JP's are doing a phenomenal job in this county, uh, because this has sort of been a, uh, as we looked into desk, but they do have concerns. They're ordering bond conditions, and there's no one to make sure that someone is keeping their interlock on their car after their DWI. There's no one staying away from the victim. And, you know, and so, this office, we would envision that would be part of their responsibilities, supervising any bond conditions. The office also has the capacity, the capability to monitor and supervise, uh, the defendants during their release. As we know, some defendants, because of difficulties getting the case to the actual trial court, for whatever reason investigative, you know, we're waiting on the state. We were waiting, you know, for years, sometimes two years for DNA for a while. Uh, this particular office would be responsible, or could have responsibilities to supervise those particular offenders until they actually come to trial, and then we move it to a different realm. All right, we'll go to the next slide, please. We have found that, okay, it's not gonna show up. It's sort of in the back. Uh, basically, this is a really important one to me, because it starts with the most, one of the most important things, the jail overcrowding. Uh, we can make sure that we don't keep people in jail when we have it crowded, and we also don't keep people in jail longer than they're legally responsible for their crime. Uh, it's like there's a thirty-day little number in misdemeanors that defendants should not be in jail without having cases done. So, that, that's, that's my number one on this particular slide. Number two, uh, we wanna make sure that we have defendants, uh, released if they can be, maybe on personal bonds, because of the lack of financial responsibility. A lot of these people, they get picked up on bill on a Friday night, and their, their petition is gone before they got to jail. But we know they could get back to work, Tuesday, Wednesday, and maybe get back in the system instead of being on the sheriff's bill for the next couple of days. Um, it also allows us at times, and I say us, to make, to ensure our defendants get to court. They have the pre-trial service office, when they're, um, a defendant is responsible for reporting to pre-trial service during this interim time period, they have phone numbers, they have family. Kelly does a lot of what we call collateral checking on defendants to get them to court. So, that, in essence, all I ever tell people, I just want somebody to come to court. I don't care what your bond is. I don't want you offending anybody else. Just come to my courtroom. And that's the most important thing. It gets cases moving, gets a defendant responsible, if they're needed to be held responsible for their crime. Uh, it also helps, I think, in the community. It gives us the community understanding. When, I have people come into jury duty, it's, it's amazing how the last, I'm, I call it the day line of it. The last four or five years, how much more aware people are of what's going on, and they wanna know. It's, you know, Johnny Observer wants to know, is somebody watching that person at night? Or they have a monitor, you know? I don't know if y'all watch the pit. Lately, we have a doctor on the pit with an electric monitor on. Uh, that's a new show on X. But anyway, it's, it's very interesting. People wanna know, and people notice those things. So, it does instill public, a little bit more public confidence with the counties, saying, we, you know, we're taking our crimes, these cases, very serious for individuals. And then also, again, I down, it reduces the loss of spending power, because that does allow the defendant, accused, to get back to work if they can be responsible. Maybe they had a flip-up or mess-up on one case. All right, you know, the next slide I see that shows up. I guess my black and white. Oh, looky there. I was so smart. Didn't know I did that. Okay, you just keep, we can go to the next slide. Boy, look at me. You can tell I used somebody else's PowerPoint, changed it up. So, I asked, we had, we have a new employee at the office, and she's my daughter's age. And I said, Brittany, can you help me with this PowerPoint? She's twenty-eight. I haven't done it since high school. I'm like, well, that's closer than me. Ten years ago, that's supposed to be anybody can do PowerPoint. Yeah, Brittany, this one's good. I, I did this one. Anyway, this is what it can do for Be County. We can monitor the defendant's release on these PR bonds with conditions ordered by the magistrate. Uh, we can do home curfew. Uh, they're just, uh, these are the things that the law allows us to do. We can make sure the defendants have their affidavit of indignity signed, coordinated, and gotten to the judge on a timely manner. Uh, they're not lost. I will tell you right now, these things, um, this is something that we hope this office will do. They're sort of just lost. I mean, the clerks, there's nowhere for the clerks to file. They're like accordion files in some of my counties. Uh, it's, and I, I envisioned this particular office maybe doing a lot more electronics. Um, that's what I, April and I discussed that, and we'll give the vegetarian issue. They'll have an iPad, keep things, you know, find a, find a place, get IT to have a place for these affidavits to be held, and we can retrieve them whenever the case is filed, if necessary. It also, uh, will give court notifications, make sure the defendants, especially in the misdemeanor world, Judge, uh, Hardwick has cases that are filed, uh, and it may be on a case that was eighteen months old. And so, the defendant may be zoomed on down the road, just totally forgot about that. That, that happened, and all of a sudden, he sets a case, no one notifies the defendant, because the bond, the defendant's changed his phone number five times, many times. But maybe pre-trial has a collateral of a parent. Hey, all we wanna do is get your son to jail. Let me get me to jail. Get your son to court. Get your son to court. But that, that's one of the things that they could assist the courts with, and that's what we would really like. Now, the one that I have not touched on yet this morning, and this is how I got started in this project, got me a little moving forward, is early identification of inmates with mental and physical health needs. And, um, I think I even brought the list today of how many, on the felony level, we're dealing with probably eleven defendants with mental health needs. The sheriff is having to house some of those while we're waiting for beds. Some of those defendants right now are in, in the state hospitals, but that's a lot. And years ago, we would maybe have two or three at a time. We're killed one in this county. Uh, so, that particular office helps us in San Pat. We identify, we anticipate them doing the same thing. And then any other crazy stuff, 'cause I promise you, every once in a while, I'll call Ms. Atkins and say, can you get, can you go try to help me figure this, this out? Uh, the mental health need issue, again, I have it very low on this slide. It is an extreme, uh, concern in all my counties, and especially this county. Judge Hardwick has been really working hard on that particular area, because we are lacking in support services and, and some county services with that. Uh, we've gotta get a better relationship with, you know, our local MHMR, and we're working on that as we go. But, uh, we're gonna, Judge Hardwick and I met with the sheriff, chief, uh, with one JP, all the other factors, because it, there's just a lot going on in that field. So, this office would also assist all of us. We'd have one person to call. Chief would call, you know, all of us would call that individual and say, hey, can you help us, help us get some, some, uh, needs met, if we can. Okay, ready for the next one. Uh, I think I already talked about this one real quick. I'm gonna just bruise these. These are some of the monitoring services that could be done. Emergency interlock, home curfews. Uh, there is a monthly fee that is charged. We've gotta pay half for that office, so there would be some money coming into that office, but, well, I'm not gonna give the budget details at the moment, 'cause I'm stepping, I'm stepping over my grounds here, or over, on my, out of my boundaries. Uh, chemical testing, that's real important for us. Uh, the alcohol and drug substances, because many of the bonds, the JP's will give someone, will be, you know, alcoholic drugs during this pre-trial time. And then the next couple of pay, uh, screens are just showing some of the services we have. Uh, that's just, you know, what electronic monitor looks like. You gotta wanna know what it looks like. And they'd be the one looking at that. Right now, um, it's interesting. When someone is ordered to have a interlock on their car, every once in a while, I'll go to my fax machine at my office and send, and there's a Smart Start fax sheet. And I don't know how it got to the district judges, who, I didn't order it. It's just somehow the system's messed up, and that's where Smart Starts sent that. So, I've gotta find the right person to give that to, so they can get it to the JP if it wasn't my bond. And, um, so that, one person, one person to deal with individual, uh, problems with, uh, GPS monitoring and admission interlock issues. And looking at this, again, a bunch of these are gonna be real quick. Uh, the next one, I think, is just the orders by the courts. One more over. There we go. And then the next one, again, I'm just gonna have you squeeze through these. Um, and one more. This is the affidavit that all criminal cases in Be County, uh, defendants that are requesting court-appointed attorneys should fill out and have help with. And that's what we would have the JP sort of do it, but, um, Judge Hardwick can probably explain to you. It's amazing how everything is always zeroed. You know, and I sometimes wanna know, well, how'd you, how'd you eat last night? Who blocked your dinner? Uh, and, well, grandma gave me some. So, they, you know, they always have, they're always in access. So, somebody sitting down and going over with that form with them, sometimes on a one-to-one basis, it gives you a little bit more insight in how this particular individual is functioning, and maybe what needs that need to be done. The pre-trial office also has the ability to go back to the judge and say, hey, Judge, this needs to be modified. This needs to be added. Is there some concerns we have? And that's another big thing that we are missing here, because there's no one doing that. And again, it's just, we found that this is where we need to be, or we believe it is. And then if you'll go to the next page, this is just a sample from San Pat. This is a court notification form that they send out, uh, to the attorney. Right now, the clerk's office does this. Um, it's a, and the district clerk and the county clerk in this county, it's a little bit disjointed. It's, um, they're, they have a lot of tasks. They have to go down a list and order, et cetera. We have the public defender here in Be County, so they get ninety-eight percent of them. But when there are conflicts or multiple defendants in the same case, they can't, they can't represent them though. So, we have to notify everybody of who their apartment would be. Uh, they'll also send some notices out. This is just a setting notice, let people know what's going on. Um, I'm just gonna, there's some people on squirrel and throw. These are just some different things I thought y'all might wanna look at when you have an opportunity, but they're too small to look up here. Um, I think we've one more, a couple more. I'm getting out the sheriff's cost, where I know where y'all will be a little bit more interested in. Yeah. Okay, there we go. Be County Sheriff estimates our cost for housing a inmate at sixty dollars. By the way, that's, that's lower than San Pat estimate, Sheriff. Y'all make a look at that. I think Sheriff is at sixty-five. I can't imagine it being cheaper here. I understand. Uh, but felony motions revoked have an average day of ten to twenty-five days in jail before they come to court. All right? All right? If pretrial services can assist with the swift appointment of counsel, and they get, counsel's appointed immediately, right now, sort of our probation department does it, and they have other duties, then they automatically let them know, they have a lawyer, we can, we think we save about seven days per motion revoked on felonies. And I have not done the math on how many motions revoked we have in this county, but it's interesting, I did do the math in Live Vote the other day. Half of, we, let's say we indict 100 cases, then Live Vote a year, we do 50 motions revoked on top of that. So just to give you an idea, so that at 4:20 a pop, it can add up real quickly, and of course, sheriff's job is not just to house individuals. We need to, they're on probation, they've filed their probation, two things need to happen. We need to change their, their services, we need to change their classes, their plan, or we need to send them to prison. So we're just wasting time sitting in jail. Very seldom, years ago, the judges did a lot of jail sanctions for defendants, until we started getting these figures brought to us. You know, if I order somebody to jail for 30 days, that's a lot of money. That, that's costing the county, I mean, yeah, it's putting somebody, I'm sort of punishing somebody, but it's costing us $15,000 to $2,000 to do that, on top of them not being responsible already. So once the judges start realizing all these numbers, we don't do that like we used to. Again, we try to, the reason they're in jail, they're waiting to go to a program or to some sort of rehabilitation plan or to prison. So, but I thought that was very interesting, once I started doing all the math again. All right, I think, is that my last one? I think it is. Judge Hardwick, questions I'd like to see, or comments, I should say?
I agree with everything he said. I think that the timeline for people to fill out an affidavit of indigency to qualify, I know that when I first sworn in and took office, that, that we were probably not meeting those deadlines, and that's one of the things that I see, and I'm, I'm getting the affidavits now, we're getting appointed, but I'm trying, I'm, I'm making the notice of the appointments. And so one of the things that's going to happen is we're going to create, if the court creates this office, we're going to have somebody that's going to have responsibility in communicating to everybody, hey, this is your case, if it's a public defender's office or if it's a conflict. The other thing I see, I have, in my court, I have a lot of withdrawal motions later in the process because of conflict, because there's multiple defendants in the same case, and I, I don't know that. I mean, I, I don't see it. We don't know until, I mean, I just, I just did this not too long ago, I had a case set for trial, and I'm going to have to continue that because I had to appoint a lawyer, another lawyer to do that, and so I see that as a big, a big plus, I think, monitoring. One of the things that's happening for us, for what I'm seeing, is people are in jail longer than they need to be. And I'm getting alias capias served, and then they're bonding out, and I'm not even knowing, so I'm missing it. I, I think the collateral information about trying to get people to court is a big, the big issue in misdemeanor, misdemeanor cases I have, and I'm sure Judge Moore will probably second that. I think that this is going to improve that efficiency, I think that we're going to be able to stay on, get people to court and be on top of it, I think. And then the other thing, these affidavits, there isn't a place to house them, and I'm really trying to get these along with the 1622 referrals, and that's another thing. Judge, Judge Watley touched a little bit on mental health, there's a lot of things that are available for early deferral for people under 1622, which is a code chromic procedure. And I, I just think that this office will help, will be the glue to put all the stakeholders, the sheriff, the jail, the magistrates, the trial judges, the prosecutors and defense counsel together where they, you know, we've got a channel for better communication, because I think that's the biggest thing that we're missing, is somebody that's going to help piece, put the pieces together. And I think that this is, this is, we'll do that. Those are my comments. Thank you.
And just, I know, now, I'm going to talk about commissioner court questions, all right? One, first thing before, the, I've been talking about this almost since the day he hit the bench, because he was like, oh my gosh, who's doing this? Like, oh, nobody, we sort of stumble around, and we're, we're pro-in compliance, but we're like, you know, we're at, if passing is 70, we're, we're at 70, you know, sort of 100. But one of the things that really bothered me, like, how are we going to make this work? How can we do it? We, we, in San Pat, we started out with the district and the county court at law, it was sort of, it was a county job, but we were responsible for it. Well, there's too many moving parts, as you all know, with three district judges. And so that became a huge issue. And we had the advent of our chief of adult probation came and heard us talking about the problem, and actually, we had taken, one of his employees had, had taken the job, and he says, hey, other states, I mean, other counties in the state have it being run by community supervision. And so when Jason brought that to us, it was like, aha! And so we moved over to community supervision runs. The employee is an employee of community supervision, that would make them not a B County employee. And Jason, or probation, we wanted to hire them, they would be, of course, we hired Jason. And so just so you know, there is some accountability there, so getting that, you know, pretrial, we can't go into them, we'd be mad at Jason, but we would never do that. But I'm saying, just to give you an idea, I always try to, I know it's a little bit graphic, but it makes you, it makes you understand how the hierarchy works. They have the ability, we have the electronic monitoring through probation, we don't have to do that, B County doesn't have to go buy electronic monitors, we don't have to go buy the drug testing. We already have the kiosk, I think he may have presented that to you all in the past, where individuals can go to the, to the probation lobby, they sign in, they pay their fee through their debit card, whatever it is, he's even got a picture for you. And they can also blow up if they need to do, right, are we blowing at this one in here in B County? Do we do the breakfast on this one?
Yes, ma'am.
And we did breakfast. And so it's user-friendly. It's not, it doesn't take an individual. So we've been real excited about those, and, and that's worked well. And so that was a big stumbling block in sentence, so we started bothering, I started bothering Jason, where we, what can we do? Well, we don't really have a full-time office that's available out of probation. Jason has, has the place full, because I think three days a week, we'll have an office in the probation office, correct, Jason? When's your counselor come? Twice a week?
Yep, up to twice a week. We do have a conference here, most of the time.
Okay, but anyway, but the problem is a little office spacing, that was a concern of mine. So I go to meet with Judge Hardwick, he set the meeting up with Joe Shawwater, and sheriff, chief, and the jail captain, and some other, or the sheriff's departments about their mental health issues, and I just happened to bring that up to Chief Kirk, who and I have been, known each other for many years. And he says, I said, you know, the problem is office, where are we going to put this person? It's got to be somewhere we can make it work, and two days a week, it's just not feasible to probation office. And he goes, oh, we have an office for you. And Judge Shawwater goes, we have an office for you. So we have a spot now, before, I'm wondering, I felt like we hadn't had a spot before we came up. It'd be at the jail, the old Crime Stoppers office, which is right next to dispatch. So the individual would come in certain days a week and would check in with their pretrial officer there. And that would also be a good spot for them when the jail needs them to call. So they would have an office at the jail, which we don't have in San Pat, which I know they would love to have an office at the jail. Am I correct, Kelly?
Yes, ma'am.
Because they're running back and forth, and many times I'll be texting Kelly on something, and she'll be at the jail. And so when she's back to the office, there, you know, there's just no place for them to go. So that, that'd be nice. So we would anticipate, we came up with, we have a sort of a tentative job description we're working off of, off of the San Pat. We're looking at maybe a $42,000 salary. Talked to April, she's got all the logistics, so when it comes down to salary, she'll have more details. And we got all the fringe and all that added in, she's, she has all that information for y'all when it, when it, when it comes to budget time. And then there'll be a few IT needs, I think, that the individual would need to start out with. If we do go to the iPad or some sort of tablet for the affidavit, she'll, you know, I don't want the person coming in and immediately, this is what you have to use. I think they need to come in, talk to jail captain, see what she wants back there, what would work best for their, for their office, and fill in these paper arcs, because they can probably tell you even the short time they've been here, every once in a while, one of those affidavits just gets lost. I mean, it falls under the floor, you know, just things happen, there's, you know, there's emergencies going on at the jail, not only checking in inmates. So again, that, that's, this is what we envision, and we feel like, I believe, the judges, that we would turn it over to Jason with the parameters that we start out with the basic pretrial office, and then if and when this keeps running, we maybe expand it to some other office, some other opportunities that are under this program. Every April, before, before every April, am I correct, Jason? Is, there is a report due, the commissioner's court. So anytime we do this. So Jason has one that we do every year for San Pat.
You're correct on the dates.
Okay.
Around April of each year, there's going to be reports of commissioners that statutes are required, and it'll provide you with the data and all the work and the cases that we've worked on.
He doesn't really, he and Kelly do a great job, they even have it color-coded. He emailed it to me one day, and I said, you're going to have to bring, I don't have a good color printer, you got, it's wonderful on the computer, but he has a very nice program with graphs, and they spend some, a lot of time showing you what services they provide to the county for that year. So it is something that you can look at yearly. There is, again, April can explain to you all the budgetary and how all that works, she and I have talked about it, but I don't want to, when I start talking out of my, my, my wheelhouse, I'll get a problem. So, yeah, so she'll, again, have that ready for y'all at budget time, we'd like that to be put into the, to the community supervision line item in the county with, there's a resolution that would need to be done, and we have that ready whenever y'all are ready to, to get that going.
Excellent. Judge, so the court would approve this, this employee, but if Jason would take control and train them?
No, you give him the money, and he knows it all.
Yes, he's a good guy.
Yeah, so y'all would not have to, it would not be, it's technically community supervision. The, the good thing about, I would tell you, unfortunately, as we have, all, sometimes have to use more medical services or not, they, if they work for the community supervision department, they get the state Blue Cross Blue Shield program. So that's sometimes nice. So it's not, you know, again, it's not adding that authority to the, to the county. And they, the way it works with San Patricia, because San Pat is the, I'm going to use the long term, I don't know if it's the fiscal county, is that what you want to call it for the district? Fiscal county for the district? They would be, they'd be under San Pat retirement plan also, just so you know, that's included in the, in the fees. And Pat does paychecks, and they do all the, all the fringe through San Pat.
Question, Judge. So thank you for the education on this, this new process for me. I guess one of the things that caught my ear was the savings back to the county is, can be pretty big.
It can be, especially some defendants, and savings is always important, but it also, you know, from, from a old economics major person, reducing liability also is so important. And then giving people the services that they need. There are, Kelly does a whole lot more than just watch people and make sure they get their court appointment, you know, they try to, try to put them in the, in the right track, they have some services they need in their life or their family lives, too. And that's, I think, is always important, as elected officials to realize that we're here not only to keep people on the straight and narrow, but we're also here to maybe assist them when there's, when there's services available for them.
Any other questions? I'd just say, I really appreciate you, I was going to say you guys, but that's sort of misogynistic, I don't mean, I really appreciate the district judges, county court at law, judge, probation, sheriff's office, our JPs, from, and they've spent a lot of time looking at this and talking about it. And I think you hit the nail on the head at the end, just now. It provides for greater efficiency for the operation of our courts. And year over year, and Judge Watley mentioned it at the beginning, the laws are constantly changing, not just the laws, criminal statutes, the citizens have to worry about, but the laws with respect to how our, our courtrooms operate and all of the services that they touch, whether it's from the sheriff's office or the magistration process, showing up to court. It increases those efficiencies because you have somebody actually watching it. Mental health, we know, is continuing to be a dramatic issue in the state of Texas, a fundamental issue that we're trying to grapple with. And, and oftentimes, when something bad happens in the mental health context, it can lead to the death of that defendant or that, you know, individual who's struggling. And this isn't necessarily a solution to that, but it provides eyes and hands and maybe the opportunity to inter, intercept somebody that's going through a tough time and be able to reason or get them services that they so sorely need. In many instances, the sheriff's, through his jail, his hands are tied, there's not a lot that he can do, the district judge's hands are tied, there's only certain things that they can do. Probation's hands are tied, but working together, it provides the ability for all of those offices to hopefully improve the life of the defendant, which at the end of the day, when it comes to mental health, that's the primary goal. You've got somebody who may not know what they're doing and why what they're doing is wrong. Those two things are incredibly important. With respect to efficiency, again, I remember before Judge Hardwick came on board, one of the most frustrating things is a misdemeanor judge, it's a little bit different for felony judges, for our district judges, but as a misdemeanor judge, you may have a docket of 100 cases, some days you may have 30 people show up. Of those 30 people, they may show up in front of you, and, or if they don't show up, you'll ask the attorney, well, did you contact your client? I tried, I can't get in touch with them, and that's not my job to ensure that they come to court, which is not something any judge ever wants to hear, but it is what it is. You've got no real probation oversight at this point in time, because they're not, they're not already adjudicated, so they're still just a citizen that we have to get notice to. Our county clerks and our district clerks are trying to get notice to them. We're not doing it by certified mail return receipt requests, we're not doing it by personal service, we're doing it by US mail, there's any number of things that can go wrong in there. With the, with the affidavits of indigency, oftentimes, the first, the first time those have really been vetted is when that defendant first appears before one of our judges, and our judges are sitting and taking time out of the docket, time that they could spend working on other cases, going through that crackatory process of determining, does this person really qualify? Ultimately, we want everybody to qualify for legal aid, you know, and in years past, we've had to kind of take that position, we want everybody to qualify for legal aid if at all possible. But in reality, we have a lot of defendants who may not qualify for legal aid. Who's vetting that process? At the end of the day, it goes against our contract with TRPD, it pertains to justification for increases in contract fees year over year. So as administrators, this is incredibly important to us. And the last thing that I would, the last comment that I would make on this is, I think it only happened once, but it was incredibly, I think it's incredibly illustrative of the value of, of this office. There was a, I had a docket, another busy docket, 100, 200 cases on the docket, we've got, I don't know if it was motion to revoke, if it was just a hearing, but for whatever reason, the defendant in that particular case and his attorney wanted to provide insights so that I could make a decision one way or the other. Well, I swore him in, and he started testifying, only to find out after this individual who had been testifying in my court three to four weeks ago had been declared incompetent by a district judge. There's nobody to put those two things together. The, the process, the criminal process is very siloed and disjointed, and to have an officer or an individual in this position to tie those strings together when, when Judge Watley and Judge Hardwick are talking about efficiencies, that's, those are meaningful statements, because these types of situations, they pop up all the time. And to the extent that we can provide a solution for our judges to come and sit at docket and be able not to have to spend their time doing housekeeping matters and housekeeping issues with cases that are before them, but to address the issues that need to be presented to them at that time. to them at that time, you're going to provide them with a greater ability to spend more time on different matters and on the substance of the matters, rather than making sure that boxes are checked and everything is correct. So I, I thank y'all for putting this together. To the commissioners, I know it's going to be another cost. I think this is one of those situations where, obviously, we're gonna have to look at it. We've got, we're early in the budget process, we haven't done our pre-budget meetings, but they're coming up, and then we'll start our actual Commissioners' Court budget meetings. But I can tell you right now, it's something that I stand fully behind, and I really appreciate y'all putting the effort. And I appreciate you putting the effort to come and educate us on this incredibly complex and nuanced issue.
Well, thank you again. So we've been playing with it for years and just couldn't get it together until we got Judge Hardwick, and again, of course, Sheriff's Office. And the way it's been working is, it's invaluable to us and San Pat. And by the way, Judge Hardwick and I had a very similar occurrence happen to us in the, with a defendant for my court and his court with mental health. There's no one to catch the two. Yeah, he, the individual's a very unique name. And he just happened to hear somebody up here talking about it.
I saw, I saw the indictment in, on my docket. I saw, I was looking in my docket, and I saw, when I pull up the docket, on my docket, on, on district court stuff I do, there she was. And I'm like, because one of the things that, that y'all, y'all don't know, but a, a, a report of incompetency is binding on every court in the state.
It was a state.
Well, there's no way, that's why I said channels of communication are gonna be created by this office, because I saw it, I knew it was Judge Watley's. I said, "Hey, this person's already been declared incompetent." And I sent her the report, because that's binding.
She presents very well for about three minutes.
Yeah.
And so you never would've known that. I mean, her mental health is such, that after about three minutes, she just takes the sharp left, and it's like, oh.
And that's the other thing.
Yeah, and the lawyers had not spent enough time with her to figure that out, neither.
The other thing, the 1622 referrals and those reports, this office will be able to ensure that, because there are stakeholders that have to receive these, and right now, we're not able to do that, and we're trying to create that system. This will help a lot, a lot.
Any other questions?
And it would be effective this?
We'd like it to go effective October. We'd love to do it before now, before then, but I don't know. We're not asking the impulse book, and April's already going like, ooh.
Yeah, I'll answer for April.
So we would love, we would love to get going this summer, but from a realistic and a budgetary standpoint, you know, you're trying to put myself in your shoes, October 1, we'd like to get it going.
Yes, ma'am.
How long would, do you think it would take a new person to, to fall into this role? And to effectively pay, pay?
If Callie, if you don't mind, I'll let Callie tell what her personal experience, Jason said, offers twice.
My personal experience switching from probation over to pre-trial, it, it took me a minute to kind of change hats and figure out what to look for and where to find it. Hopefully, it, with them not having to learn on the fly, with me being in San Pat County and able to help, I'm hoping that it will go faster.
I think, I think it'd probably take them about six months before they quit calling Callie every day. I'm just, I'm just, you know, Jason, you may have a different, 'cause you, you assisted with both, when we had it with the adult, I mean, with, under the judges and with Callie.
Yeah, I think, in my opinion, I think, y'all approve this, it would, as I said, ease the burden to the jail census, ease the burden to the courts as far as timelines and the deadlines are concerned. We have the infrastructure in place already. We didn't have that when we were in San Patricia County. When the judges launched this pre-trial services bond office in San Patricia back in 19, there was no, there was one person who had a checklist, and the county grew from there, but we have our kiosks in place, we have our technology in place, we have our computer programs in place, we have Callie Atkins, who's now a, you know, an office of three that she leads. Those are all advantages to when if we decide to put someone here and start a pre-trial office in B County as well. I mean, we're there to, they, they work for, yeah, me. I mean, so, you know, Callie would make sure that they're taken care of, so will the courts, you know. It's, it's not some miracle growth for your hair either, though. I mean, it's not perfect, what we do, but it'll alleviate 80% of a lot of the trouble that's typical in a, in a world detention situation. And there, there's a distinction between monitoring someone and supervising someone. Callie and her staff, they monitor people, right? They haven't been found guilty, they haven't pled guilty. We supervise, probation supervises, 'cause they, they pled guilty, they may not have been found guilty, they may be under verdict. They're guilty. So again, Callie, it took her a while, she was, she had to change her psyche as far as dealing with that's concerned. And to this day, it presents a challenge, but she's been at this department for, gosh, 15 years? Almost 18 years, right? So, I mean, you know, having said that, y'all are at a distinct advantage, because we're ready to go.
That is true.
Callie, did you develop some kind of software or something to plug these, these different components into this thing, or are you just making it up as, as you create?
Uh, no, we, I harassed Victoria County a lot, and Tarrant County a lot. And then I got a, an assessment that Galveston County Pretrial uses to determine people's risk levels, if they're a violent offender, which is really all I'm looking for if somebody comes out violent. It, it determines high property, high drug, moderate and low, but it also has a high violent, and it's based off of their criminal history. And so, yeah, Galveston County and Tarrant County, Tarrant County actually validated the assessment when they used it. And so the director out there in Tarrant County kinda helped me get straight on that assessment. It just worked out best for our county with it being somewhat rural. It was, it's a good assessment to use.
Thank you.
She has that available to give back to the JP's if they're doing the bond or like, I, I require, when I have someone file a request for bond redemption in the district court, I, I have a rule. Now the judges don't. I make sure pre-trial officers are there. They know, they know that on the docket, if I have a red habeas corpus letting somebody up, I'm not doing it unless I'm educated. Like I said, I don't know what just planning to embarrass you guys, can take. My rule is that, I want that input.
Judge, just a statement on the timeline, you know, as our judge said, we're gonna start on budget here real soon. Process, 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 round. August is when it comes to Commissioners' Court's final approval. We get a final approval, you guys can go ahead and advertise, get that position ready to go October 1. Interview in September, get all the equipment they need, get it all, and October 1, they turn the key on, and they're gone.
Okay, good, great, great.
That, that would be.
That's what, that's what we would love, we would love that. And Jason could, he could make that, couldn't you not?
I'll just simply say, we already have it. We're locked and loaded, ready to go. It's just a matter of finding that right person. I did pass around the job announcement, just as a, so we're, we're ready. It's just a matter of, I see.
It will not, most likely, it will not be a certified probation officer, because they, that salary that we're proposing is, is not commensurate with that. But we would hopefully be somebody that has, has some good, good skills and that knows where we're going with it, so. And then about software, real quick, in San Pat, we use Odyssey for the title product. We don't use, for our caseware software, case management system, and that's countywide. So Callie uses a lot of that, we won't have that ability to do here. She'll, they'll have to just put it on the B County server and get the forms uploaded for that.
Thank you again, and I don't know, did you wanna say something?
They'll also be able to use CSS for probation, which is, they'll be able to document and upload the, the file into CSS when they're on bond condition. So they'll have another software that they utilize as well.
That's, that's crazy. I didn't know that. So thanks, Callie. And that's other beauty about having a work as a probation department in Florida.
Absolutely. And I, I think I felt to thank you guys for your effort in, in this solution, and especially Mr. Woods and Ms. Atkins, thank you for being present this morning and joining.
Callie's on me at jail on Monday morning, so. San Pat jail may be missing her today, so I'd appreciate her coming over.
Well, this is nice, this is like, this is easier than.
No, that, that, that work doesn't go away. That's what I, that's what I mean. She has staff, but yeah.
Well, we have a rule, and this is gonna be a long agenda, but nobody can leave until we're done with the agenda. It's an open meeting, but it's a closed door once you come in. I'm just getting, thank y'all so much for being here. This is just a presentation, it's not, no action is gonna be taken today.
Go free, my, myself, or the other two district judges, of course, Judge Hardwick has all the info also. He's just excited, I said, I already know how good it is, and so he's, he's getting excited to see it happen.
Thank you, Judge. We're getting excited, too.
Thank y'all.
Have a great day. Thank you again.
Thank you, guys.
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I think it just pushes that power button again.
Hold it down, hold the power button down. Close the lens, right on top.
Or the little slide, the little slide in front.
I've got a hammer.
I don't know, but whatever you push means Candy's gonna have to spend another six hours figuring out how to set it up again. Is it back for resetting?
There you go.
All right. Moving on, agenda item number nine, approved expo request for a Renefi waiver from Bevo Little League for their closing ceremonies event on Tuesday, May 27, 2025. I have a motion and a second, and I presume you're Ms. Pettis?
Yes.
How are you this morning? Is there any presentation you'd like to give? We're all very familiar with your organization. I believe all the paperwork is in order.
Yes, sir.
We really appreciate you being here this morning, and I don't wanna cut you off. Do you wanna talk to us at all? You don't have to.
No, sir. I'm, I'm the president of the league, and we just requested this for our, for our kids. It's out of the field, there's no shade, there's, you know, there's very limited seating, and that's why we really enjoy using the expo, the arena.
Absolutely. If anybody's ever gone through a closing ceremony on the field, it is brutal. That's so sweet for the children. Thank you so much for your service to the community. And, you know, the Bevo Little League Association is a very large organization, touches tons of children and our community. It improves the lives of tons of our, of our community's children, and so thank you for all you do. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you. Thank you for being here this morning, ma'am. And you're welcome, you're welcome to stay, and you're also welcome to go. And Candy's coming over to, nope?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Moving on, agenda item number 10, approved 2026 B County Resolution authorizing submission of grant application to the Texas Indigent Defense Commission for the Indigent Defense Improvement Grant Program. Mrs. Schrader just passed, this is largely housekeeping, this is a grant we apply for every year. The deadline is on Friday, we went ahead and submitted it. We have submitted a request in the same amount as we had requested last year, there had been a change in the award, but, like I said, this is something we've done with TIDC for many years now.
Move to brief second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you. Agenda item number 11, approved request to authorize the use of the county credit card to purchase notarial bonds for county employees during the current fiscal year. This is my agenda item, it's, to me, it seems very clear, but that's because I wrote it. But basically, basically, and we've got a lot of pending notary applications right now, both in the sheriff's office and actually in my office, and there's been a change in the process of acquiring the bonds, so all notaries in the state of Texas have to be bonded, have to apply for a bond. The insurance company that we utilize requires that we do it online, and we have to have a credit card to do it. So what I'm asking the court to do is to authorize our auditor's office to utilize that, that credit card through the end of this fiscal year, and then we'll just need to have another motion for next year, if it works, to continue this way, just so that we can cut down the turnaround time from when we bring somebody on board to when they actually get their notary. Move to brief.
Second with a comment.
I have a motion and a second, you have the floor, sir.
The comment that I wanna make is that utilizing these credit cards saves so much paperwork, too. There's not PO, there's not that process and everything else, and it's, it's actually saved money to do it.
We, we, of course, would still have a purchase order, Commissioner, that's part of the procurement, but yes, sir.
That's it.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. All right, agenda item number 12, approved appointment of deputy constables for B County Constable Precinct 1. This is Commissioner Lenny's item, Commissioner, before I turn the floor over to you, though, I do want, I, I have a little discussion I'd like to, to put out. I tried to raise this issue a couple of years ago with our justice, with our constables. There was a misunderstanding of purpose, intent, and so it never got resolved. But when it comes to constables in the state of Texas, there's two statutes that give the ability for those constables to retain other constables to work under them or at their discretion. The first is, deals with the appointment of deputy constables. The second deals with the appointment of reserve deputy constables. The law varies as to the obligations, responsibilities, and justifications with respect to these two appointments. In B County, we've never, and despite my prior efforts, as I mentioned, there's never been a understanding of those differences. So we are constantly, not constantly, but when a constable requests to have somebody come in and work with them to the county court, they aren't following statutory law, right? So we have a request to appoint four deputy constables in Precinct 1, and without, without consideration of validity, the justification, the appropriateness, the quality of the individuals, without discussion of any of this, let's just listen to the law. So the law says, for a deputy constable, an elected constable who desires to appoint a deputy must apply in writing to the Commissioners' Court of the county and show that it is necessary to appoint a deputy in order to properly handle the business of the constable's office that originates in the constable's precinct. Let's counter that with the very following section, which is reserve deputy constables. So Part A, the Commissioners' Court of a county may authorize a constable of the county to appoint reserve deputy constables. The Commissioners' Court may limit the number of reserve deputy constables that a constable may appoint. A reserve deputy constable serves at the discretion of the constable and may be called into service at any time that the constable considers it necessary to have additional law enforcement, blah, blah, blah. They're different. A reserve deputy constable is a different role. There's probably different financial components, there is certainly different liability with respect to the county between a reserve deputy constable and a deputy constable. The time is now, because the issue has been raised by me through this opportunity. And again, this has nothing to do with the intent of the constables, what they want to do, the quality of the individuals, this isn't a tech, this isn't a challenge, the county judge isn't trying to change things or make things more difficult. I only want our constables to follow the law. But there has to be a pragmatic component to all of this. And pragmatically speaking, there is a request, and we've been honoring these requests for years. And so what I wanna suggest, and I promise I'm gonna turn the floor over to the Commissioner who actually has the agenda item, what I'm going to suggest is that, for the time being, I don't have a problem with approving the request, but within 60 days, I would like to have all of our constables, and it's something that I can have them do, come to court or just talk to me beforehand and get this issue straightened out with their various appointees, so that at least from a legal basis, the Commissioners' Court is operating these two statutes correctly. This has, I have to mention this, because this is where everything went sideways last time, this has absolutely nothing to do with T+. Has nothing to do with holding, what's this called? Commission, holding commission. It has nothing to do with any of that. It has to do with getting our constables to follow the actual statutory law. to follow the actual statutory law that they're obligated to follow. That's all it has to do with. But at the same time, I don't want to unfairly punish this agenda item without giving them an opportunity to do things the right way, and the overall cost to the county is de minimis to begin with. So that's kind of my thoughts. I know that some commissioners may have strong ideas and comments, and I welcome them. I'm not trying to shut down the discussion. It's just an issue that I saw an opportunity to bring up, and that's my, in my mind, a pragmatic solution to move forward and get this straight for the benefit of the county commissioner. Lenny, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Alimah reached out to me and asked me to put this on the agenda, and I asked him if he could be here to answer any questions, and he was not able to. He had a prior engagement. But he did email me, and I'd like to read this into the record by me. "Please forgive me and excuse me for my absence in today's meeting. I had prior commitments with my daughter before the meeting, and I cannot miss. I'd like to express to the court my reasoning for adding these deputies. Since they have separated from their previous employer, they have asked to be part of my department. They can assist current deputies and local law enforcement on their time. This show, this will show a force of law enforcement from my department. Each deputy understands that there is no compensation in agreeing to accept positions. I'm asking the court to consider and approve these deputies so our communities can continue to have protection and safety. Again, my sincere apologies for my absence. Best regards, Gabriel Alimah, Constable of B County Precinct 1." I did reach out to April to see what it does cost to the county, which I was informed is less than $100 per person per year, right? Correct? And so that's, I just want to bring that to the court and discuss that.
Are you ready to make a motion at this time?
That is my motion to accept. These four, these four deputies, Ryan Trevino, Gilders Mindy, Jesse Garcia, Donna Starry is the four that he is asking to be entered in.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second with comment.
I have a motion and a second. Now we'll get into stronger discussion. Commissioner Oliver, you have the floor.
Yes, so first of all, I'd like to apologize to the court for jumping the gun a little bit earlier during my general comments. I guess the one thing, and also Judge, thank you for the clarification and understanding of that role, because I did not. My understanding was these individuals needed to place basically the whole of their licenses and also their commission. And from my understanding was they would actually work under the JP at this point, so they could hold that commission. When I saw the word work, it threw another tangent, you know, what does this really mean? That's the piece that I didn't understand. Are they actually going to be working back to the county, supporting us all? And that was the only clarity that I was really looking for. But since you added those additional comments, now I have, I need to better understand what more questions, what that role really, really means. So that was my big question to the court. Number one, apologize for jumping the gun. Number two, just trying to understand what is the word work? You know, is the county paying these individuals to do a certain task? And that's why I'm asking. I have some comments.
You have the floor, Commissioner.
I know this has come up before, and the, the previous sheriff had some reservations about extra constables out there because it creates a liability on the sheriff's office and the sheriff's department, and they work under the constable, not the JP. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. My questions are to Mr. Alimah. He's not here, but if you look at the position description of a JP, of a constable, one of the main things is serving papers. You know, writs, warrants, that sort of thing is serving papers. To my knowledge, and I did some research on this with the auditor's office about a year or so ago, because we had some comments about most constables were not serving papers. When I did my research, the constable out of Commissioner Oliver's precinct was serving a lot of papers. He's done a great job. The others, not so much. And my question would be, if you need four deputy constables to help you serve papers, and you're not serving papers, all you're doing is holding their commissions. That's it. And I'm not sure, it's my understanding, one of these people doesn't even live in B County. Is that a factor that we need to consider, that they were holding a commission for somebody that's outside the county? I don't know. That's, that's for the court to decide. But I, I know that possibly there's not much cost, but there is an increased liability. These constables have sworn officers. If a crime happens in their presence, they're supposed to take action. They're going to be under our umbrella, and if they're taking action, let's say they're on their way to a severe accident, and they have an accident, B County's liable, correct me if I'm wrong, Judge. If they're at a scene and something happens and they discharge a weapon, B County's liable. If they get in a situation, and that adds four people to our cadre that we didn't have before, and we don't know why they are now, what's the right word to use? No longer, their commission no longer held somewhere else. We don't know the reasons. I, I have some, I have some real reservations about doing this, Commissioner. I really do. I'm not sure this is the right time to do this without further research through the sheriff's office. I don't think the sheriff and them have been asked how they feel about this. I'm not sure that we want to talk about that in public, because some of these people used to work at the sheriff's office. They no longer work there. We don't know why. And I have some reservations about doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Those are good comments. Any further discussion?
I, I, yeah, Judge, thank you. How many reserve officers are working under the constable?
I hate to interrupt you, but lang, no, no, language is, it matters in this particular case. I believe there are zero reserve deputies working under any constable in B County. But certain constables have deputy constables. Zero constables have appeared and justified the need to have deputy constables working under them. Whether this, this court decides that we want to, and I hate to derail you like this.
No, no, no.
Whether this court decides to set a number of allowable reserve deputy constables that the constable can appoint. They don't, to be, to be a reserve deputy constable, you don't have to justify that you can't do the job. It's too hard, and you need, you need additional help. Reserve deputy constables don't do that, but we can set a number for our constables to limit that reserve deputy. Then they can go through that process on their own. They don't have to come and justify it to us. So we can't interpose reserve with deputy because the statutes, the obligations of this, of this Commissioner's Court and the constables varies with respect to whether or not it's a deputy constable or a reserve deputy constable. I apologize for interrupting, but it's really important to keep that discrepancy clear.
No, this is a great, with that clarification, correct me if I'm wrong, the way this is written, we're saying, I have so much work to do. I've got to have more help. That's the way this is worked.
And, and, and that's why, again, I'm sorry, just, are you okay? That's why I don't want to punish our constables for not understanding that nuance at this, at this point.
Maybe it needs to be brought back to the court.
And that's why, that's why I said I don't have a problem with approving this, just my personal opinion, with this being, this agenda item being approved at this time. But what I am telling the court is that within 60 days, I'm going to bring this issue back, hopefully with the assistance of our constables. We tried to do this a coup, was it two years ago, Candy? We tried really hard to get this straightened out. But the constables took personal offense. They thought that I was challenging them or trying to reduce their ability. They got confused. They thought that I was challenging TCLOs and saying that we have some authority or power with respect to a peace officer's commission in the state of Texas, and so it went nowhere. But yeah, I, I think that's why we get a letter like this, is just a failure to understand the interplay of what they want to do and how we've been doing it for so many years and the actual laws that are on the books. These aren't new laws, but it's, it is complicated. So Commissioner Lenny?
Yeah, I'm only the opinion it needs to be brought back to us properly worded.
Understood. Or justified.
Well, and, and the individuals need to come and tell us why they need so much more help, which is the way this is worked.
Question, Judge. If the court does approve it, and I like the 60-day deal to hold all the constables, you know, their fees.
Just to get it straight. I don't want to hold, again, it's not punishment. I just want things to be straight, and they're just not legally straight right now.
If, if it is approved, and they come back in 60 days and they're not fulfilling those requirements, can we as the court take those commissions away from that particular constable?
Absolutely. If they're deputy constables, they, yeah, they, it has to be justified. So if it's no longer justifiable, those positions go away. If we set the limit, let's say we set a ceiling of 10 reserve deputy constables, then they could have 10 reserve deputy constables, and, and they can make their decision on their own, if I read the statute correctly, as to who those, who those 10 reserve deputy constables are, so it doesn't require the justification to the court. I would love to know, and I don't know if your office, Ms. Cantu, has looked at this particular issue, but I'd love to have tax input on what the various financial obligations and personal or professional liability obligation differences are with respect to a deputy constable versus a reserve deputy constable. I would love for the constables to have done this work. They've had ample opportunity to do so, but I don't fault them, and I, I don't want to punish them for not doing it. So that's, I guess that's where we differ a little bit, is.
Yes, and if memory serves, when you sent out the information to the constables, asking how many deputies they had, some of them didn't reply.
I don't even remember. It was such a terrible situation.
They would not give you the information, and you continued several times that this wouldn't do it.
Give them the opportunity to come back. Yeah, I, I, again, I'd like I said, I've, it's, it's up to y'all. I just, I'm not trying to punish, we're not trying to punish the constables. Just want things to be done correctly. Or the, or these proposed deputy constables, or the ones that currently exist. But we should just do things the right way. But from a pragmatic standpoint, unlike Commissioner, I mean, I think in fairness, I'm willing to overlook that right now and just say, hey, we're going to come back in a couple of months. We're going to have it straightened out, one way or the other, with all of our constables at the same time.
But their commissions will not last between now and the time it's brought back to the court.
And that's something I don't know, and so that's a good.
They won't, because, correct me if I'm wrong, they're good for a while, even if someone is not holding for about a year.
About six months.
Six months. There's still time.
Okay.
There's still time. Their commission's not.
And that's good, too, because that was one of my concerns. Like I said, I'm not trying to punish anybody.
So.
And they're out of town, or is it? Are we not, are we not currently holding a commission of a person that lives in San Antonio?
Uh, yes, and I believe it's even further north than San Antonio.
Are we?
Uh-huh.
Yes.
As a deputy constable, not as a reserve deputy constable.
So Judge, thank you very much for the education. You threw a whole nother plethora of understanding of this role. Number two is, we've already set the precedence. We already have several individuals that are currently working under constables. I, I'm totally in agreement with you. As we know, it's not a punishment. Some of these individuals are probably, they're probably good to go for a short period of time. Now, whether six months is the right number or not, sooner, especially now since we know they've only got six months. So rather than waiting till the ninth hour, might want to do a little bit sooner to get a clar, some clarity towards what that role is. Or it could be brought back to the next Commissioner's Court.
Sure.
And, and done properly. And that, and that's, I'm not trying to tell y'all what to do, but why don't we do it right to start with? And we've got an opportunity to say, okay, bring it back to the next Commissioner's Court, and change the way it's worded and do it properly. And we're through with it.
Good point.
And still do the 60-day review.
Well, bring, yeah, bring it to the court. Let the court decide with it, with it, with it worded properly. And that way, the sheriff and the judge can be able to get together and see if there's anything that they need to discuss.
And we should consider, and we should discuss, and we can make it a next agenda item, or we can do it in a couple of months. But we ought to consider setting a limit on reserve deputy officers for our constables. Again, not as punishment. It just is a matter to, to kind of control this process.
Judge, do we stand, Judge?
Yeah.
Judge, do we get any kind of report as to the activity of papers served throughout, throughout the year?
No, not with our constables. We don't.
Is that something we can?
That I'm not familiar. I'm not aware of.
That's when I got into research with the auditor's office.
Well, they're, they're a fee collecting department.
The fee is a, the fee is how you determine.
Goes to the JP, so.
That's correct.
And so under, under statute, if you're a fee collecting department, the auditor can, can ask for a report.
And that's how we did the research.
Like our other, or like our other.
When I did the checking to find out who was doing their, had some papers, and that's when Constable Oliveris was right at the top. He was the end of the job.
Yeah, he's always been.
He really was.
And you, and you can see any revenue line in our, in our 12 revenues. Each constable has a revenue line, and you can see that, that history.
Yeah, I've, I've got a request in with Nada Auditor right now, just to actually see the dollars that are coming in, you know, by the constable and also by the JP's as well, since we're talking about that. So looking to identify that report. I'll go handle that.
I have a motion. Do you have further discussion? You sure?
I'm good. I'm good.
Anybody else have any further discussion? I was just going to say I have a motion and a second on the floor. There's no further discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead. I mean, let's take all the time we need.
Commissioner DeWitt brought up a good point, and, you know, we're gonna, I mean, I'm, I was ready to approve it and have these individuals on board with, and then you educated me a little bit more on the statute, and we're going to carry it out to six months. But I think if we can get this done and get it done correctly by the next Commissioner's Court, which shouldn't be difficult. I mean, it should be justifiable, so it ought to go pretty quick, I would think. But I'm going to retract my second, and then maybe Commissioner DeWitt, if you want to frame out another motion, that we try and bring to the next court.
I will retract my motion, and I will make the motion to table it to the next Commissioner's Court.
May 27th.
May 27th.
I have a motion to table agenda item number 12 to our May 27th agenda. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Is it right?
Yes, May 27th.
Yeah.
Since 26th is a holiday.
As a holiday. Again, and I've said it 10 times, but I want to say it again, so there's no confusion. This isn't a, this isn't a criticism of our constables or deputy constables or reserve deputy constables, anybody at all. It's just a fact of the matter that for years, we've kind of followed our own process rather than following the statutory process set out by the Texas Legislature. And so hopefully, we can continue to address this situation in a positive manner where our valuable, independently elected officials, our constables, don't feel that we're trying to attack them or their autonomy, because that's not, I don't know if I can speak for it, but I will. I know it is true for me. It's not our goal at all. It's just to get it straight, one way or the other, get it sorted out.
And the thing is, Judge, if I may, we know what it is now. Let's do it. Do it properly.
The thing is, you may be a little bit vulnerable for doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Absolutely. And we want it to be uniform across the board. We want all four of our constables to be treated the same and have the same opportunity as any other constable. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Tape, motion to table passes without exception. Moving on, agenda item number 13. Thank you all for that spirited discussion. I greatly appreciate it. Agenda item number 13, set public hearing date pursuant to Texas Transportation Code, Chapter 253, entitled County Improvement of Subdivision Roads Vernon 202003 to consider placement of 25 miles per hour NPH speed limit sign on Bronco Lane in Beville, Texas. Commissioner DeWitt, this is your agenda item. Do you have a motion?
I have a motion to set it for June the 9th at 9:30 in the morning.
I have a motion to set the public hearing for June 9th at 9:30 in the morning. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda item number 14, set public hearing date pursuant to Texas Transportation Code, Chapter 253, entitled County Improvement of Subdivision Roads Vernon's 2003 to consider placement of 25 mile per hour speed limit sign on Fairway Ridge in Beville, Texas. Commissioner DeWitt, this is your agenda item.
Yes, Judge. If we would, we'd like to set that also for June 9th at 9:40 a.m.
I have a motion to set the public hearing on Ju, for June 9th at 9:40 a.m. Do I have a second?
I do.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda, thank you, sir. Agenda Item Number 15, Approve Standard Form Agreement Between B County and Comatsu Architecture for the Courthouse Conditions Assessment. Commissioner Farias, you gave us a little taste of what you were going to do here. You have the floor, sir.
All right. After talking to Eric McPhee and, and talking to the contractor, we're going to meet this afternoon at 3:30. So this meeting is before. There's no way we can improve it.
Without having a meeting.
Yeah.
I, I.
A little bit more time. Yes, I need more time. I'd like the tableist till May the 27th, and, uh, that way we can move forward.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second to table. We're doing good, kicking the can over the road. Yeah, May 27th. Commissioner Legos, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you, uh, thank you, Judge. Uh, thank you, uh, for the good work that you did there, Commissioner. I did have an opportunity also to speak with our, our county attorney and also Eric McPhee with, with that. And, uh, we're all with the same agreement basically as a lot of agents in the contract, and could probably streamline the process while they're doing a needs assessment, having that part of one contract and possibly adding on from there. So it was a good assessment to hear from others that, you know, the oversight from our team here was, um, was pretty good, so, uh, that's good.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner, for your comments. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number 16, Approve Adjustment Overtime Rate Calculation Previously Approved Under the Section 7K Overtime Rule for the Sheriff's Office. Chief Deputy, I have you down as, uh, discussing on this agenda item. Do you want me to just give a general overview? And if there's some questions, then I can pump to you.
That would be great.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, or yellow, there's.
Can I keep your hand up?
Yeah, absolutely, please. So, um, you know, a few months ago, Sheriff and Chief Deputy came to us with a, uh, a new idea and a solution on providing greater coverage and, uh, reducing overtime at the Sheriff's Office with respect to our deputies, CID. And, um, and it was a great idea, and it still is a great idea, and we wholeheartedly supported it, voted it, and approved it, and took, put it into action. What we didn't recognize, um, or consider at the time was that, in effect, uh, we diluted those, and it's a limited group of employees. I think it's a total of 18 positions in the county.
Judge, if I may, it's, uh, it's the entire sworn law enforcement and jail.
Okay, so it is a jail system.
It's all personnel, uh, sends dispatch.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So it's a little bit larger group.
Thank you, Judge.
But the long and short of it was, uh, we went to, and, and this is a federal mandate, we went to an 86-hour pay period for these particular, uh, positions. Their salaries remain the same. The easiest way I have to describe it is where prior to us, uh, taking that motion and approving this, this plan, uh, deputies were paid X for, uh, an effective 80-hour, uh, pay period. Uh, the day after we approved this plan, the deputies were paid the same amount for an effective 86-hour pay period. It has caused some consternation amongst the Sheriff's, uh, uh, Office. Um, and it's, and I guess at the end of the day, and I've had discussions with the sheriff and with Mrs. King too, um, the last thing that B County ever wants to do, we spend a lot of time and a lot of focus, especially during budget, about trying to bring our salaries up, about trying to remain competitive for our, uh, employees, uh, because we recognize they are our most valuable asset to the community, and the last thing that we want to do is take action that in effect reduces what, dilutes, uh, their pay when you compare it to the amount of time that is required of them. So that's, if I'm, if I'm speaking correctly, this is something that we're going to address during the budget season. So you will see this moving forward, uh, after October 1st, uh, in our budget discussions. Um, but we do have the, uh, the unfortunate situation where we have an interim of about half a year, where, uh, where we, we, we have employees who are receiving the same, uh, but are required to, uh, work more to maintain, uh, that same salary than they had before the motion. Um, and so my understanding of the request, uh, today is that we're going to, uh, the, the request is to amend the salaries of those affected employees so that, in effect, we undilute, uh, their salary when you, when you compare it to the amount of hours that they work. And on an 80-hour pay period, you work 2,080 hours a year. On a, uh, 86-hour pay period, you work 230, 2,000, 236, 36 hours, uh, a year. Now, I know we have members of the, uh, Salary Committee, and we have, uh, Chief Deputy, uh, ready to go, so I'm going to turn the floor over and let somebody else drive, who wants to?
I'll just make a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve.
I'm going to second it, because I, after I heard it in the Salary Committee, I said, hey, let's, let's correct it, and it's not going to affect us that much on the.
The total cost.
The total cost.
Yeah, I don't have a cost. I had a cost for the 18, so this is, uh, this is a little different.
It, it needs to be done. That's, that's the one.
You mind if I clarify something, Judge?
Yeah.
Uh, just to clarify, um, wouldn't, you're exactly right about how the calculations are made. And so what we're asking, we're not asking the court to increase any salaries or anything. We're just asking the court to recalculate their overtime rate to, to what it was previous to us initiating 207K. And that charge is on the back of the back of your document.
As long as HR understands what you're saying, that's all that matters.
I believe we're all on the same page.
We, we had him in the room.
Yeah, I, I think we are. And that's the reason I stand by my motion.
So, so on the back of the document, you see the previous rates and you see the, the current rates, which are, uh, uh, under 207K. We're just asking to recalculate that time, uh, that overtime rate to the previous rate instead of the current rate. Just for clarification.
Clear as mud, Chief Deputy.
Yes, sir.
It's a bunch of numbers. No idea what's going on.
So, so, um, calculating it on, um, the backside with OT, like you just said, um, and we did talk about it in, um, Salary Committee, uh, the line, item in 409, that is already dedicated to this OT, um, I believe can absorb it, and we're just gonna.
Does this make our employees whole?
Well, I, I mean.
Following federal law, Judge, I mean, we've, we've had this conversation with other commissioners that if we'd been doing this for 30 years, people that'd come onboard wouldn't know the difference. It's, it's the change that was made with the current employees that, that were the grievances that are coming in.
Right.
Since they, they're, it's recalculated over a different, uh, said about hours across the years.
This should correct it, though, correct?
Well, it'll.
It'll make it better?
It'll change it. Yes, it'll change it back to the previous calculation.
Right.
Um, but unless we do something else going forward, which is a different conversation, it could potentially revert back.
But this would take us to October, is that correct?
Yes.
We've got time to, to figure out the rest of it.
That's correct.
And, uh, this is not retroactive, it's effective, this payday is act, we need an effective date. Is that what you did?
It would relate back to the day after the original motion was made. Does anybody know what date that was?
January, well, we implemented the, the start of the January 26th, so it was the commissioner's court just prior to that.
So January 26th is when you implemented it. Again, I've got to ask, ask the question, um, does this make our employees whole?
Yes.
I know, because I'm not concerned, the, the question is not whether we're following, this particular agenda, the question isn't whether or not we're following the law, it's whether or not we're being fair to all concerned.
Back the way it used to be, on the overtime, uh, page, like, like.
You said January 26th?
Yes, yes. And, um, and when I said that, that, you know, that they can just calculate that differently, those hours.
No, the pay periods are different. Court is when we approved it. Pay periods hit it on a different date, so that, you'd have to go back to the pay period.
The pay period, we're, we're reverted back to the pay period from the first initiated.
Retroactive. That, is that what we're saying, Judge?
That's exactly it.
Yes, make it, make it retroactive.
I mean, I'm not making the motion.
I know, but that, is that correct? Is that what we want to do?
Oh, can, I miss it, yes, I'm in place.
To go retroactive, that's fine, that's what y'all want to do. Um, what do we do about employees that are no longer employees?
They're no longer employed.
No longer employees.
So they would not, they would not benefit, in my opinion. No.
So it's the, right, because we need this clarification.
Retroactive to that date for current employees, employees who are employed, at that time that are still on board.
It's a complicated issue.
It is.
If it turns out that it doesn't actually make our employees whole, I'm going to bring it back to Commissioner's Court.
I agree, I agree, sir. Because that's, that's the goal, is to bring them whole, to make them whole.
Right. I, I didn't know if it was going to take effect starting this next pay period, but y'all want to do it retroactive to January, when we hold it on.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, 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 we do.
Yeah, because it was never our intent. I don't think it was yours intent.
It was not either, it's unintended consequence, for sure.
It just happened.
Exactly, absolutely. It was not intended.
I don't think our employees should bear the, the burden of that. I think that we should.
Next, second.
I did second. I amended the second.
January 26th.
January 26th.
It's the first page.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Did you get that, Veronica? I'd like you to read back that motion.
I got it.
Please don't let me read it back. Okay, I've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Thank you, Chief Deputy. Thank you, Sheriff. I'm here this morning. Appreciate it. Hi, man. Thank you, Salary Committee, everybody. Really appreciate it. No further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number 17, Approve District Attorney's Request to Use County Credit Card to Pay For Docket Signed Subscription Renewal. Ms. Saldana? I mean, we've been saying yes a lot today. We may be out of yeses, but do you have a presentation left to make on this?
No, sir, it's just, it's.
It wasn't very much, if I.
No.
It was 151 pages.
Yeah, and it just, no, we're not talking about that, yes, sir.
That's the next one.
I know. I'm like, oh my god. Okay, back to, uh, number 17. No, it's just to use, uh, the county credit card to renew, um, our docket sign. Like I said, it's not a large amount, but, um, Ms. McWilliams has been paying for it, and she'll get reimbursed minus the tax. And so, now that we have the opportunity to submit our tax exempt, to continue using the docket sign.
I've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without exception. You got our last yes of the day. Good job, Veronica. Thank you for your presentation.
That's not fair.
Okay. So we're all done? Okay. Agenda Item Number 18, Approve District Attorney's Request to Apply for the Ed Rachel, Rick, Rachel, Rachel Foundation Grant. Ms. Saldana?
Yes. Um, I do not have a presentation. I do want to apologize for the 161 pages. I was told to submit the grant. That's exactly what I'm submitting to Ed Rachel. Uh, this was a recommendation from the Sheriff's Department, and they introduced us to this grant. Um, they have already applied, and they did receive some funds. Um, so that's the only thing I had to say, was I apologized for the 161 pages.
No need to apologize. It was actually illustrative of, it would be interesting.
They got to read the report this time around.
Good point.
Because it's, you know, it's too much, it's hard to read the pages, but you can go on the computer right here.
You just go like that.
I think the grant, 15,000 for furniture and furnishing stuff, boot approved.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Uh, any further discussion?
Good.
Moving past this issue. Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number 19, Approve Order of Assignments from the Fourth Administrative Judicial Region of Texas, Assigning the 36th, 156th, and 343rd District Judges to Preside Over the Second Multi-County Court at Law Beginning April 30th, 2025. Uh, this has to do with Judge, uh, Hardwick, uh, taking some time, uh, vacation time, or having other conflicts, allowing the district judges to hear his cases.
Approve.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number 20, Approve Contract Labor Agreement Between B County and Anachapa for the Auditor's Office.
I see this contract is for 5,000. I would move to approve. Not to exceed.
Second.
Yes, effective, um, the fifth.
We kind of got started a little early, I, I proved.
Yes, my, my office is.
Asking for forgiveness. Sorry.
Really?
And Chief added great value, yes, it's a tough spot, tough time for the auditor. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for bringing the forgiveness. Agenda Item Number 21, Approve Interlocal Purchasing Agreement Between B County Purchasing Solutions Alliance for New Copier Rentals at the Emergency Operations Center, Sheriff's Office Jail Medical, and Jail Justice of the Peace for a Term of 60 Months.
I, I have most approved with a comment and.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Commissioner DeWitt, you have a second.
I looked at the contract. I have no problem with the contract at all, but I'm thinking it's light. The contract's for 1,500 copies. That's three reams of paper.
It's more. It's, they're giving us more than our current contract, and we can't add to current contract. This is rental, and, and when we come into budget, I'm going to, uh, give you a little spiel about, uh, the differences between leasing, which we're in now, and the rental from this new vendor that we've, um, uh, been engaging with.
This is a new vendor?
This is the new vendor. And these are the three copiers that are in need in our, in our departments right now. And so I'd like to, uh, discuss that further with the court, uh, at a later time, as far as going with this vendor, you know, with our other contract. But, um, this just gives us more latitude in, uh, the use of these, uh, machines and what the need is. Uh, it needs change in our departments, and so they are able to go with those needs, uh, within the contract term. So, uh, when you lease something, you can't, you, you can't change machines out, uh, if the needs change. Uh, but with, uh, with this new, uh, type of rental, we can't.
My only concern was that 1,500 copies is nothing for three copiers in three different departments. That's, that's a ream each. And you can rent a ream of paper in a couple of days. And that's so is the minimum, that's the minimum. And then it starts charging, what, uh, 0.09 cents a copy?
They're able to adjust, uh, with, with those needs.
Okay.
So right now, this is just the, the beginning, and so they can, they can adjust that.
Because it's the base. Did I read it correctly? After all, this belongs to us all six?
We have the right to purchase it at the end of the 60.
And that's within, that's within emission. That is within emission.
This supplies all the supplies too.
Yes.
Which I thought was.
Yes, and this, that's with our, our current lease also, but.
That, that's a big issue.
Yes, it is big. Yes.
I'll stand by my motion.
All right, we still have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Any spirited debate on copiers?
They're important, Judge.
They are, and they're very expensive.
April's like, of all the agenda items that I thought I was going to get peppered on, I really didn't think it was going to be on the copiers, but you did well.
No.
She did, she did well.
The copiers are, they're just a lot more than they. No, because they're, they're a lot that we.
They're a lot, they're a pain.
And they're very expensive.
It's just a matter of putting them in the right place in that ELC building so everybody can use it. That's another story.
Oh, gosh. Just couldn't, you just had to take that one step further. We were going so well. All right. Uh, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number 22, Elections Administrator Request for Permission to Have an Electronic Display Sign on the Corner of the Courthouse Lawn During Election Cycles to Display Non-Political Election Messages. Ms. Warnes?
Good morning.
Oh, you're already up there.
Yes, I am. Good morning. This was, uh, an item that I would like to, to have the court consider. Uh, Doc Two, Brian Garza, out of ELC, and he has three of those signs that are on the trailers, and that would be like, Marim, one of those. One of them's not working temporarily, but he said they usually have them available. And of course, it's, uh, would be based on his availability to loan it. Just, uh, messages like last data to register to vote, uh, early voting hours, those kinds of messages. That's what we're looking at. And this is kind of a possible temporary situation, because in budget year, I'm going to ask for something different.
Oh, well, we're saying no budget, so.
No.
If I can make a motion with a comment?
When you make your motion, we have not specified the law, which is to specify courthouse grounds. I don't want to.
And just for, just for clarification.
We're on the same page.
Just for clarification, what we're talking about is out here on the corner where the, uh, Corpus Christi Street and, uh, Sycamore's intersection. purpose Christian Street and Secondary's intersect, right on that corner there, where the new electrical pole and stuff is. That's what we'd be putting it, and maintenance has already said that, yes, it would be no problem to put it there, they could put it there, of course, and there is a way to lock it down.
Good time, Kevin. Get a second.
Commissioner, with you, you have the floor?
Do we have a second, Judge?
We don't have a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
With comment. Okay. It needs to be courthouse grounds, of course. Thinking where you want to put it, can you just put it where a couple of those cars park?
That's what I was going to, that's what I was.
And not put it on, on the grass or on the sidewalk?
If, if.
Would we need to check with the city?
I probably would have to check with the city.
I, I think that might be better. It would be more open, and we wouldn't have it on the ground, on the grass or anything.
It is a trailer.
It's, 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 it's always about the size of those two benches together.
Yeah, they're pretty, it's pretty big.
But, you know, it sits up and, and it's, it's solar powered, so it would recharge itself.
Good suggestion, sir.
I think so, I think.
The city, a couple of times I've asked them for things about the parking and stuff, they've been very generous, so I don't see any problem with that, but yeah, that's a good idea.
And of course, that is, that's courthouse parking anyway, so.
Right.
I love the idea. I'm so glad you love it.
The only, the only thing, I need to double check with Ryan about being able to be locked, that somebody just couldn't hook on it and take it off, so there may have to be some kind of, I don't, I don't know what the capability.
Take the cars off.
I think it's got real lock.
Yeah. It does what?
I think it's got real lock.
It's got real lock?
And basically, my motion says not on the grass.
Okay.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Further discussion? I'm so glad you brought it. How did you come up with this idea?
I just, our signage, well, we hit ask.
It's all pretty small.
Ask, well, they're small, yes, but our problem is during like the summer months, and like, we have impossible trying to get signed up, because the ground is so hard. And I don't know if you've been out to look to where they put the, the sprinklers in on the outside of that, they're right next to the poles, so they're not wanting any of the grass that, or the ground that we need to put in, so we came up with an idea, and I ran it by Commissioner Farias, about having some places put in the ground that are not trip hazards, we could just walk out there and set signs in them, because we pretty much put them in the same place every time.
Let me give you the rest of the story on those signs. Leadership B County years ago, I was in leadership of B County in two thousand, before I was there, put up a nice sign on that corner out there on fifty-nine, and beautiful sign. When the Restoration Courthouse, they made them take it out because it wasn't historical. So that's why this one is so important, that this is temporary.
Right, yes.
Because that was a beautiful sign they had out there, and the leadership B County paid for it, the leadership candidates paid for it, and they had to take it off, had to completely take it off.
But the other ones worked, because you can just place it and take it out.
Yeah, they're temporary, so we, and we don't even leave them out there overnight, we take them down every night. We put them out every morning, every night. The city allowed us to put the thirty-minute, where the thirty-minute parking is for our big elections, when I went to the city council, they allowed us to put temporary signs for election parking only in a couple of those spaces, and then when I had to go to the, we had to have the assigned curb sign that could not be our handicap, they gave us that spot in front of the art thing, so they told us that we could use that, but they took it to their court, their council, and they evolved.
Ms. Wornings, is, is one of those enough, or would you want permission for two, in case you wanted to book two? Seriously.
You talking about the sign?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I think one is enough, because like I said, this is, I'm hoping a temporary measure that we are talking about.
It's a great idea, I agree, this is a great idea.
I would hate to take his other one in case an emergency came up, because he only has two that are working now. I mean, he, if he's kind enough to loan us one, that would, if that one.
That would do all right. Well, if you change, you can always come back.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're supportive of, but greater note of affection to the community.
You do good, ma'am.
Thank you.
And it's been a few months since you've been in front of us, so let me take this opportunity to thank you once again for all you do, keeping our elections safe, fair, open, and accurate. You and your team, you're all our unsung heroes. I know you just finished an election, it was relatively small compared to what's coming up in November and next, or March, next March and next November, but thank you for all that you guys do.
Well, we thank you for the support we always get from the board.